Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council meeting of the City of San Bruno for April 28th to order. I'd like to begin by thanking the San Bruno Garden Club for the floral arrangement they've presented for this evening's meeting. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Mayor Franzella.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
If I could ask Vice Mayor Ruane to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, this Saturday is our annual Operation Clean Sweep, which will begin at nine o'clock at San Bruno City Park. Volunteers are encouraged to register online through the city's website. Irene, did you wish to add anything?
Thank you. I just hope people got their focus. And on the back is our new little logo with San Bruno, California, be a love bug, not a litter bug. And it has more information about Operation Clean Sweep. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no presentations this evening. Review of agenda, I'd like to pull item 11, Senior Advisory Board Annual Report to follow the public hearing, which is following item eight. No other changes. Approval of minutes, the minutes will stand approved as submitted unless there's any changes or corrections. Any changes or corrections?
No.
Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. Item seven, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action. May be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested by council member, citizen, or staff. Staff has requested that item seven be pulled and they'll provide an oral update on that.
Seven F.
Excuse me, seven F. Okay. Any other items to be pulled or action from council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. In discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven F, adopt resolution pledging net revenue sufficient to fund payments for loans received through Clean Water State Revolving Fund for various water quality projects.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, good evening. Based on your direction and the city manager direction going, being very aggressive in our intent to bring federal available funding under the Recovery and Reinvestment Act approved by Congress this year, during your March meeting, you approved and for the city manager to apply for wastewater and storm-related project to apply for grant or low-interest loan to the Water Resource Control Board. The department, in our process for applying for this loan, the department learned more about the requirement and the application process. Based on our available information at this time, is very possible that for communities with a healthy financial situation will not be available, grant will not be available, but low interest rate, 1 percent probably will be available for funding. Is, the department really has no available information how successful the city will be bringing at this time those federal funding back to the city, but is our intent to still be aggressive in applying for those grants. How I indicated before, as part of the application process, the department learned that beside the resolution to approve the reimbursement of those funds to the Water Resource Control Board, is one of the requirement is also to dedicate specific revenue from the Enterprise Fund to guarantee the reimbursement of those funds. In order for us to recommend for your consideration this resolution, which basically, the intent of this resolution is to dedicate specific Enterprise Fund to, for that loan payment, the city needs additional legal and financial follow-up work. Our legal department and finance department and including the city manager did not feel comfortable with the work done by us so far to make the recommendation for you to pass that resolution at this time. Will be our intent to follow up with further work on debt capacity and other legal requirements to meet the loan repayment expectation of the Water Resource Board. And after those additional work, will be our intent to come back and to make further recommendations for your consideration, hopefully at our next council meeting or certainly as soon as possible. I would like also to emphasize that is our success rate to be able to be granted, this low interest rate is very low. Or I don't want to represent for you that our comfort level is very high in our success rate for even for this low interest loan. But in looking at in a longer term, not knowing this whole stimulus funding process is a evolving learning process for those agencies who administer those funds, and certainly a learning process for all of us also. And is, is very uncertain even if in our, at this first tier funding, the city will not be successful securing any of those low-interest loans. Maybe another tier two will come and additional federal funding will become available. Also, as you know, is a, the Water Investment Act was already passed by the House and waiting for Senate action. And if not, as a result of this additional stimulus funding, but maybe additional, more federal investment in water, how I indicated, under that Water Investment Act, will become more funding available and the city can be success, will be, may be more successful in the near future also, being able to bring more federal dollar back to the city, knowing how critical our need is for infrastructure in investment. As you recall, as part of our recommendation for the rate study for include, for wastewater and water, was part of the recommended strategy to use debt financing as one of the strategy to maximize our capability to improve our infrastructures. For those reasons, even if our invested work now seems unreasonable, that this federal expectation at this time are very high, and to meet, the city needs to do lots of extra work in legal and financial area, but in long term, will be investment worthwhile, that those results and the process, what which process the city is going through now, will be able to be utilized later on for additional federal funding or as part of our own strategy under the rate proposal. And is, will be our intent, that's the reason why this item was pulled today, and will be our intent to come back with further recommendation at your next meeting or soon after.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much. Item eight, public hearings, hold public hearing, waive first reading, introduce an ordinance adding new chapter 6.51 Dangerous Fireworks to Title VI Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare to the San Bruno Municipal Code. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this brief as I gave a full report to the city council during our last meeting. And so tonight, I'm bringing forward the ordinance proposed Chapter 651 addressing dangerous fireworks in conformance with your direction. In short, the ordinance would do three things. Number one, pursuant to SB 839, the city would be able to issue administrative citations for what was previously a misdemeanor violation under state law, and that is possession of dangerous fireworks, 25 pounds or less. Secondly, the ordinance would make it a city violation to sell, use, or discharge dangerous fireworks. And third, the city would allow for a city-regulated public display of dangerous fireworks under certain limited conditions, which would include the requirement of a permit approved by the city manager, 90 days timeframe for the application. The city manager would be able to promulgate reasonable rules pertaining to the permit application. The event would only be for those that are accessible to the public as a whole. In other words, we're contemplating a community event, no block parties. The police and fire chiefs would need to establish that the character and the location of the event is such that it would not create, in their opinion, a fire danger or endanger any person or property. And only a state-licensed pyrotechnical operator would be permitted to set off the fireworks. Would also be a permit fee associated with the permit in order to reimburse the city for its costs. I do have one change to the ordinance, which is just a minor one, on Section 6.5103OF, where I have the city manager may deny an application. I should have put shall, so I'd like to change that, if certain conditions are not met. And also, associated with this ordinance is a resolution setting the fines and the amounts that the city council previously directed. This time, is there, are there any questions from the city council?
Any questions to the city attorney?
Through the chair, just was gonna say, I think you tightened up the language that we discussed at the last meeting, and I appreciate it.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public wanting to address the city council regarding this proposed ordinance? Seeing none, once the public hearing is closed, you'll be precluded from speaking on this item. And is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. In discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council discussion?
Make a motion, waive the first reading?
Second. Motion in the second. In discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead and introduce the ordinance production, please.
The ordinance has been introduced. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Mayor Franzella.
Aye. And now we have a resolution that needs to be adopted.
Go ahead and introduce the. We'll move for introduction of the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Mayor Franzella.
Aye. Now we'll move to item 11, reports that commission boards and committees, and we'll receive the annual report from the senior advisory board.
Go here.
Yeah, right there is fine. Thanks.
My name is Dorothy Carmichael, and I'm representing the San Bruno Senior Citizens Advisory Board. And as you can see, there are some pictures over here to go with my talk this evening. The object and purpose of the board is to contribute educational, recreation, literary, artistic, and social activities for citizens age 50 and over, so that they can experience a better quality of life. The board approves the senior center programs and activities with staff, volunteers implementing such programs and activities. The board oversees and coordinates programs and activities within the center and provides a communication link between the community and the governing body and staff. We receive staff reports and graphs of program participation and lunch participation, minutes from committees, and suggestions from citizens. We act on new programs or changes to existing programs. At least one member of the board is a member of each committee. Special projects accomplished in 2008 and 2009 were to repair the senior center roof, kitchen wall repair and completion of a full year of onsite cooking for the nutrition program, repair and paint the facility, and replace the partitions in the multipurpose room, which we are enjoying right now. The, these were major tasks, the center had to be closed for one week to accomplish all these things. Also, a high-speed duplicator was purchased with non-general fund sources, and 25 new tables purchased for the multipurpose room from the non-general fund sources. We had two new, some new fundraisers, a silent auction at the happy hour, a hoedown, and a revival of the artist's musical show and dance. And this was very successful and a lot of fun. New community events, there was a veterans' recognition event with El Cristal students, small toy collection for the Pacifica Military Moms, so that the soldier station in the Middle East can distribute them to the children. And this came about from suggestion in our suggestion box. New classes and services, eyeglass repair in hearing and cleaning, stepping, strong walking, and fitness group, classes on the internet. 2009, 2010 goals and objectives, replace the 21-passenger van to make programs and services easily accessible to San Bruno seniors' residents, raise funds to help pay for this, purchase a new color copier for administrative work, general new revenue, generate new revenue by organizing additional fundraising events, work with the department to acquire an electric signboard, replace speakers in the multipurpose room. Members of the board are personally involved in the workings of the senior center and nutrition program as volunteers, thus saving the city many dollars. Citizens can come to us with questions, and if we don't have the answers, we get them. We are a hands-on board. I feel comfortable knowing that a board and staff that care are monitoring the senior center programs and activity. On a personal note, I came to the senior center in 1994 after being downsized from my job, and started with the walking program. I was 58 and thought I was so smart and fit, but the 70-year-olds proved me wrong, and I thought they would have to carry me back. It was scary when I started my new life, and I didn't think I would know anyone, but I felt welcomed here and started to make new friends. I attended the computer club and became involved in, and did their newsletter for five years, and also held office. My husband, who had Parkinson's disease, enjoyed playing bocce ball, and there were only four guys out there playing. But now there are three leagues each week, and I'm also playing myself. About two, seven years ago, I started escorting day trips. I learned to play bridge, and that has opened a new, whole new world to me. I could go on and on, but feel that this center is not a place to come to after you retire, to sit back and let people wait on you, but a place where we come to become alive, learn, and serve. Volunteering is hard work and sacrificial, and I'm sure we all have more stories to tell as to the benefits we have received in giving back to our community. Thank you.
Dorothy, thank you and for your report, and all of the time that your advisory board members give. And, you know, it's been said a thousand times, but this center wouldn't be the center it is without the volunteers and the staff working together to just make it such a wonderful place. And there's no place I can go in town without somebody stopping me and thanking me as if I did it myself for the senior center. But it is really due to the volunteers, and you, folks really do a great job. And it's a wonderful place. Thank you. Item nine, public comments for items not on the agenda. It's the council's matter to raise, to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on item not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to item 10, conduct of business. A, receive quarterly financial report as of March 31st, 2009, for the 2008, '09 general fund, special revenues fund, enterprise funds, and capital improvement budget. And Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the city council just spent the past hour and a half at a study session reviewing a recommendation from the city manager for an outline for the '09, '10 budget. What I'd like to do now is to review with the council where we are with the current '08, '09 budget, we're three-quarters of the way through the year, and the problems for the budget for next year, in many ways, the seeds of the problem really came about in '08, '09, and the council has already had to take decisive action budget-wise in the current year that actually is setting the foundation for getting through next year. The economic crisis, sometimes I'm stunned by the fact, it seems like the economic crisis has been going on for four or five years now, but the real impact for the city and much of the financial crisis really percolated, really began during '08, '09, and August, September, is really perceived as the beginning of the recession. And the impacts have been, as we've discussed and just briefly review again, in anticipation that property tax revenues, while they will not drop dramatically over a short period of time, that the assessed values are declining, foreclosures are up, and that's gonna have an impact on our general fund property tax revenue. Sales tax is an area where we've already experienced downturns in adopting the current year's budget. There was a reduction in sales tax estimate from what we received and what the budget was last year. The council's already taken action to reduce the budget this year already for sales tax in anticipation of further declines. The city experienced in the current year, the Lehman Brothers bankruptcy impact, and nearly a $700,000, a little over $700,000 impact on our general fund in the current year. And finally, after a period of many months of increase and actually sort of a robust period for our TOT and hotel tax, that has leveled off, and we've actually experienced four consecutive months now of decline in a month compared to the same month last year. The council, as I mentioned, through a budget amendment that was approved back in January, has actually reduced anticipated general fund revenues in three areas. Sales tax was reduced by $300,000. Our use of money in property, which is really our interest earnings, was reduced by $743,000. And actually, our departmental revenue for the community development department for our planning and building fees was actually reduced virtually in half based on the lower business activity that we've been experiencing. So the council has already taken action, and when you're looking at the performance of the budget so far this year on the next couple of charts that I'm gonna be showing, we have already adjusted the budget, the revenue for these amounts that I've just indicated were reflected in an earlier budget amendment. Again, just to remind the council that there was decisive action taken very quickly this year to resolve the gap between the revenues and expenses, and the city manager proposed, and the city council reviewed strategies responding to the economic crisis. Hiring freeze was imposed around mid-year. There was the definitive anticipation of salary savings for additional vacant positions. Contract services were reduced. Supplies and equipment costs were deferred or reduced, and there was a compensation contingency in the current year's budget that was actually eliminated based on the council direction that compensation, employee compensation would not be increased in the current year. And as you know, there was, there's further conversation about employee compensation into the future. There was also, in fact, use of one-time, not reserves, but one-time revenue using pass-through money from the RDA and ERAF refund in order to balance the budget and to meet the deficit of $1.4 million. So that's the background of the budget that would be looking at. Again, the revenues for general government include primarily, this is all of the taxes are in the general fund. I mentioned property tax. You see that sales tax so far is 64 percent of the budget. And if you look back at last year, it was actually 64 percent, but the amount of revenue that we received is lower. The reason the percent stayed the same is that the budget was reduced. As I mentioned, it's been reduced by $600,000. So the math, the math just happened to work out that it was exactly 64 percent both years, but sales tax revenue is definitely down compared to last year. Again, you see use of money in property while it's at 78 percent, and again, the benchmark for three-quarters of the year should be 75 percent. This is, this is again, an area where the budget has been reduced by the $743,000, leaving the budget at $1.1 million. Recoveries and, well, that was really what I wanted to comment on, on the general revenues, would respond to any questions that you have. In departmental revenues, comments on just a couple of lines, you see the fire, fire revenues are at 156 percent, obviously an awfully high number. That is primarily because of revenues that we receive from the Office of Emergency Services for refund or reimbursement of $260,000 in overtime that the city needed to expend in spending, in sending strike force personnel to California wildfires last summer. So that was our obligation, and the OES has an obligation to pay us back. That doesn't go back into the overtime funded, or into the overtime line item, it goes back into revenue. So that's $260,000. I checked the balance of the fire revenues, for the most part, that's based on the issuance of permits and inspections. And looking at the revenue there, it is actually up slightly through three-quarters of this year compared to the full year last year. So fire is being aggressive in actually getting that revenue. Yes, Mayor?
I just had a question. If the revenue, if we, the expenses made for overtime and we're being reimbursed for overtime, why isn't the reimbursement going against the overtime?
overtime, why isn't the reimbursement going against the overtime? Why isn't it being applied to overtime? Why is it going to general fund? Because then you're not getting a true picture in your financials. You're going to say, at the end of the year, we spent, you know, this was the overtime cost. Well, no, it wasn't because you were reimbursed.
The best answer I have is our auditors don't like us to net it out like that. The auditors have directed us to put it into revenues, and so that's, I mean, the best we're attempting to do is we're showing it as fire revenue and earmarking it as fire revenue, but what you're describing, we would really be netting, we'd have an expense, and then we'd add a revenue to an expense line item, and our auditors have suggested that we not do that.
Through the chair. Just to add to that, there was a citizen that asked in regards to overtime hours, certain levels and what have you, and this was something that I don't think the resident received as a footnote, if you want to call it that, that of the overtime hours that were reported, we're talking about 260-plus thousand dollars of that was for strike force, which was reimbursed back to the city. So really, when you saw those numbers, they weren't all for firefighter overtime within the city of San Bruno. They were also, if I'm not mistaken, they were also for the strike force teams that went out through California and fought fires, which now we're finally getting reimbursed. So I see what the mayor is saying, because honestly, when you look at it and we're reporting that, really, it's skewed of what that person is really gaining in overtime from his or her service here at San Bruno.
I mean, it almost, and I guess, you know, the auditors certainly know better than I, because I only had a few college accounting courses, but, you know, when you, if you spend money on advertising and you get a reimbursement on advertising, you apply that reimbursement to advertising, and it nets your advertising expense. And clearly, you, they might not like you to net it, but you've netted it. I mean, you got a reimbursement of $268,000 from the state of California for that overtime expense that basically we're just ignoring and we're taking in the revenue.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be glad, our auditors were here last week, and they're going to be back again. I'll gladly pursue it further with them.
Text me when they're there, and I'll come and question them.
Bring your accounting book under your arm and...
It's a little tattered, but, you know.
I mean, I was, because I will point out on the redevelopment agency, there's, the redevelopment agency revenue and expense looks vastly different than it did last year in what I'm reporting to you, and it's for the exact same reason. We were netting revenues when it came to the payment of pass-through to taxing agencies, which seemed very logical to me, but again, our auditors asked us to take it as an expense, and so again, it skews it, and I've capitulated to that request, but that's not to say that it can't be further addressed, and we can look into that and see if we can do it differently.
Through the chair. How do you, how does the state know how much to pay you back? Do you invoice the state?
The state is paying us back based on invoices and a calculation that we need to provide to OES with time and everything for all the personnel that are away.
So just to make it clear in my mind, you invoice the state for an expense that we performed on their behalf, and they're reimbursing us based on that invoice?
Correct. They're...
Then I totally agree with the mayor. Thank you.
That's how you do it in business.
Yeah, it seems weird.
We would be happy to provide additional...
You need to text us all next week when they're here. We'll come, text us all when the auditors are here. We'll come talk to them.
We would be happy to provide some additional explanation to the city council. The reimbursement that the city receives is for the service that was provided. It's based on the actual time that was spent. It's also based on the mileage according to a formula. We send an apparatus as well. Our people don't go just by themselves. So the reimbursement is based both upon the invoice as well as, I believe, on some formula that the state uses to evaluate the appropriate cost to the agency, so...
But I mean, again, and I don't, it doesn't do, make any difference to dwell on this, but if you're billing them, you're billing them for man-hours that you've expended. A portion of that's man-hours, and if the whole 268 isn't for man-hours and overtime, it shouldn't go to that. Part should go to the general fund, but if you're taking the time to break it down, it would seem that accounting principals say, you know, you expended it and you took it in as income, they should cross and net each other out.
Through the chair.
Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you. I have a question, too. On the list that we gave, the gentleman who asked for it, for the overtime per person in the fire department, was that strike force overtime reflected in the overtime that was listed? Because if that was so, then that also is unbalanced and not a yearly occurrence.
The information requests related to compensation paid to our employees, and all of the compensation paid to the employees, no matter if the overtime was for overtime in the city of San Bruno or overtime in mutual aid or in a strike force, it reflected the total compensation paid to an employee.
Well, and it, but that in and of itself creates a problem, okay? You're being asked how much overtime. It's not painting a clear picture. You spent overtime of, let's just use that it was all 268, none of it was apparatus, but you were mandated by the state of California to spend over a quarter of a million dollars of this community's money outside of the city, and yet, when you report to a citizen, we report that we spent it all, and we don't tell them, there's no explanation anywhere, and now there's not going to even be anything in the financials, because the auditors are telling us not to do it that way. It doesn't make sense. You know, it's not a clear picture. I'm sure Mr. Barry Alley with his Freedom of Information Act and his request wanted to know how much employees were making on overtime. Were they making it here? I think he would understand that 268,000 of it was mandated by the state and was to fight wildfires. It's totally different than how much was spent here. And I think it's real important that if we have to report it that way in the financial statements, that somehow it'd be footnoted, or we add a page after the auditors leave and say, look, the auditor said do it this way, but here's the real truth, and that the picture be clear to the citizenry.
Through the chair, and I don't want to dwell on it either, but I do want something to change after you speak to the auditor, you text us, or whatever you need to do, because I think it misrepresents, honestly, what that information was that was given out. And not that anybody was trying to, but it doesn't give an accurate picture. As I said, it's skewed, and I think it's important when, in these challenging times, that citizens are asking these questions, that they be given a full, transparent picture so that they know exactly what it is costing and where the money is coming from.
Proceed.
Could you make yourself more clear? It shall be. The next slide shows expenditures, total expenditures for the general fund through the third quarter at 76%, which again, is just slightly above the benchmark of 75. You've already concluded, and I will just reiterate, that the fire department expense is at 80% in part because of the overtime expenditure for the wildland fires, so that is shown there, and we will work towards reflecting that differently. Just moving on to the redevelopment agency, again, this is the significant accounting change that we're experiencing in this current year, and again, this was the new auditors, and they pointed this out to us last year, and we're implementing it this year based on the council comments, may run this by them again. And just very briefly, again, what is happening is San Bruno gets 100% of the tax increment that is due for the redevelopment agency, but immediately, the redevelopment agency is turning around, and nearly 40% of what we get goes to other taxing agencies. San Bruno Park Elementary District, the High School District, the College District, the Mosquito Abatement District, there's 11 agencies that share in this. What I have been doing since the agency was formed was I have been reducing, those payments have come out of the revenue that we get for tax increment so that, again, sort of the true picture of the taxing increment is presented. The auditors have requested that I stop doing that, that I show that as an expense rather than a reduction in revenue, and so that is why the numbers are different for the redevelopment agency.
And I'll give them that one. You can track it as long as you spell it out and you show where the expense was. That's trackable, but just taking the money for overtime and losing it in revenue is exactly what happens. It's just lost. There's no way you could pick up that financial statement and go through and determine that that was an offset on overtime, that you were billed, where you could in redevelopment see that, okay, here's, this is actually all of the revenue we receive, you actually get a check or a transfer into your account for that amount of money, and here are the monies you expended or by law were required to pay out to these other agencies. I mean, you can follow that, that makes sense. The other one, it's backwards.
Not to dwell on it, but...
Not to dwell on it, though. The only other comment I was planning on making was really as it relates to the enterprise funds, the, I'm going to cut it really short now. City manager keeps saying I have to, but no more. Is, just looking at the enterprise accounts, generally, the revenues and expenses are what we would perceive as being on target. Wanted to point out, there is a low revenue number on the Stormwater Enterprise account. That is generally a fund that the revenues are very closely generally matched to the expenditures. There's not, there's very little excess capacity in the Stormwater Fund. It is impacted this year more because it's more visible. All of the enterprise accounts took a hit from the Lehman Brothers' interest earnings. The general fund took half of the loss, the other funds took the other half of the loss, so it is visible in the Stormwater Fund because the overall fund is smaller than the others. So that's an explanation why the Stormwater Fund appears lower. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has.
Any questions of staff? Okay. Thank you for your report. Look forward to your conversation. Item B, adopt resolution approving third quarter budget amendment for the 2008-09 general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and capital improvement budget. This is a resolution putting into place those items that we've already done. It's just formalizing it into a budget. Do you need any questions of staff or action from council?
The chair, I'd like to introduce the resolution for adoption.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Franzella.
Aye.
Item C, adopt resolution establishing and implementing identity theft prevention program in accordance with Section 114 of the Fair and Accurate Credit Transactions Act of 2003. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, fraud attempted or committed using identification or identifying information of another person without their authority is defined as identity theft. Since 2003, the Federal Trade Commission has required financial institutions and some other creditors to actively work to protect customers from identity theft. These regulations have now been extended to all creditors with accounts that are designed to permit multiple payments over a period of time and other accounts where a reasonable risk of identity theft exists. A typical example of such a covered account really is the city of San Bruno's utility accounts for water, wastewater, and garbage, and for our cable television customers, where customer information is retained and services provided in exchange for payments over a period of time. Red flags or warnings, or warning signs or activities that a possible identity theft issue could be at hand. The following red flags are identified as raising the suspicion, or potentially raising the suspicion of finance or cable personnel, such things as a report by a credit agency of theft of information. Suspicious documents, if an altered driver's license is brought in and presented to the city when an account is open would be an example of a suspicious document. Or if a customer themselves notify finance or cable that their bills are not being received regularly, or that there's unauthorized charges to an account, those would all be red flags to us, that there could be potential of identity theft. Again, the Federal Trade Commission is requiring us and similar organizations to develop a policy to work towards the prevention of identity theft, and that's what you have before you is our proposed policy for identity theft, and the policy spells out actions that the city would take in responding to these red flags. In addition to the proposed confirmation and checking of identity and responses that are laid out in the proposed policy, it is a fact that credit agencies have now established programs permitting someone like the city to perform a positive identification check on new, all new applicants for city utility or cable television services. The program, as offered by Equifax as an example, requires an initial setup fee and a charge per transaction that would be applied to each new account. In order to ensure that the city is doing everything it can to ensure that there's not identity theft, we're actually recommending that the city subscribe to this service and do this positive ID check by providing a social security number to a credit agency that we would then get return information verifying that there is not a flag or a warning on that particular individual's credit account. We open about 200 new accounts per month, and that would be a $300 charge total if we were doing that. It's not necessary in order to implement the policy. We think that it would be prudent to do such a thing. We, in fact, have many people that come in that are not able to furnish a valid driver's license, or their identification is somewhat suspect. To be quite frank, we have not been notified of any instances of identity theft for our accounts. I think it's probably more prevalent in opening a Macy's account or opening, or getting a credit card than it is for a city account, but again, it would be our recommendation that we go forward with this concrete and positive act to further protect our customers and to make sure that there is not an instance of identity theft. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has about the program or the proposed policy.
Any questions of staff? Action from council?
Introduce the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Mayor Franzella.
Aye.
Item D, receive report and provide direction on proposed ordinance temporarily suspending portion of tax liability for airport parking facilities. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as we normally do prior to an ordinance coming before the council, we present a draft or the ordinance to the council to receive their direction in actually putting the ordinance to the council for the public hearing and the first reading. the first reading. In this instance, Sky Park, which has had actual reduction in the airport parking rate since 2007, has submitted a request that the current rate of 5.5% be continued through calendar year 2009 with an automatic restoration of the rate, January 1st of 2010, to the 8% rate that was the initial rate for this, for the airport parking tax. The company or the airport in general and the company specifically is continuing to feel the impact of the economy, the fewer number of passengers going through San Francisco Airport and beginning actually their travel from San Francisco, which is the potential pool of people using Sky Park for a period of time. And in '08, the company reports that there was actual increases in traffic, but it really about this time that I was talking about, the general economy dropping the last couple of quarters of last year and so far, the first quarter of 2009 here have seen significant drop-offs, both in the traffic. But I did have an opportunity to look at the financial statements and I think the difference between revenue and expense has suffered over this period. So, the company is requesting continuation of the 5.5% through 2009. Joe Galligan is here and I'm sure he or I could answer any questions that the council might have about this.
Any questions of council or direction from council to bring forward an ordinance that would continue the same taxing situation that you have currently?
You need that in the form of a motion?
We should probably have a motion, so...
Yeah, through the chair, I'd like to bring, make a motion to bring forward a new ordinance, continuing ordinance temporarily suspending the portion of tax liability as it is now.
Motion in second and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, comments from council members. Hearing none, the city council will be going into closed session. The city manager and human resources director request a closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 4957.6 regarding direction for labor negotiations with the San Bruno Professional Firefighters Association, Public Safety Mid-Management Bargaining Unit, Miscellaneous Group, Mid-Management Bargaining Unit, San Bruno Police Bargaining Unit and San Bruno Management Employees Association. From there, they'll be, we'll just be giving staff direction. There'll be no action item. The city council will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be held on May 12, 2009 at 7:00 PM here at the San Bruno Senior Center. Thank you.